All right, we have the, we have the time at 7:00 P.M. We'll call this meeting to work, uh, time 7:00 P.M. Can you join me for the pledge allegiance, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, this evening, we have a dual purpose meeting. We have a public hearing for a zoning commission, uh, hearing, and then we also have our regular scheduled trustee meeting. Mr. Heeson is likely to hold the roll.
Mr. Raymer.
Here. This is Reed.
Mr. Stubbs, here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Uh, so as I said, we'll have two, two things for the meeting tonight. One, the public hearing for the zoning commission, which we'll kick off with, and then we'll move over to the regular scheduled trustee meeting. Uh, at that point, I'll, I'll ask for the, uh, public comments, so if you'll please hold them on, uh, the regular trustee meeting. We're gonna go ahead and kick off with the public hearing for the zoning commission. Uh, this public hearing is related to case 2021-54ZTC filed by the German Township Zoning Commission. Case is related to proposed zoning resolution text changes or amendments. Uh, if adopted by the Board of Trustees, the proposed zoning change will be effective in 30 days. Uh, the zoning case 2021-54ZTC, um, we will have, uh, you sworn in if you have any comments to make, um, but we will be led by a presentation by our zoning inspector. Um, and with that, I guess I'll go ahead and, and swear you in, Haley. Uh, do you solemnly swear to affirm or affirm that any testimony you shall give before the trustees during your public hearing shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? If so, answer I do.
Yeah.
Okay.
We need to open the public hearing.
Oh, let's make a motion. I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The public hearing is now open.
Okay, so let me, let me now swear you in.
Yep.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that your testimony shall give, I'm sorry, uh, shall give before the Board of Trustees during the public hearing shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? If so, answer I do.
I do.
Okay, go ahead, Haley.
All right, did you guys, um, get the package printed out that I sent to you?
Yes.
All right, so, uh, on the first page, just the exhibit page, exhibit A is my staff report, which you already covered, Tyler. Uh, this is case 2021-54ZTC filed by the German Township Zoning Commission. Uh, there are several, uh, parts of the, the resolution included in this. Uh, exhibit, uh, B is the application, which is again filed by the zoning commission, so it looks a little bit different than what the applications normally look like. Um, because typically they're coming from residents, so that's why it looks a little different. Uh, exhibit D is the German Township, I'm sorry, exhibit C is the resolution amendment. Um, all of them, the only thing that is changed is the red lettering. If it's strikeout, then it's being removed. If it's red, then that's what we, they are proposing to be added. There are several changes to, uh, the definitions, which is Article 2. Uh, some things just do not apply anymore. Some things are new. As time moves on, things change. Do you have any questions about any of the definition part? All right, and then we also have... And then after the definitions, we have, uh, section, uh, 26-3. Uh, they did change a couple of things in there. They also added some additional information about pools. Uh, the big thing with that, a lot of people have asked me about that. They have, we had a five and a half foot, uh, requirement for the fence surrounding a pool. The ORC is only a four-foot fence, so they changed that, they would like to change that to the four-foot fence to be in line with the ORC. That also helps residents find fencing, because apparently the five and a half foot fencing is harder to find and more expensive. They also added a provision in there where, uh, the residents could use a full cover that meets certain requirements, um, and those are inspected areas. So, uh, the Ohio, uh, Ohio looks as though this is just as visible, so that's why they wanted to include that also. There is also some language in here about our wellfields. There was not a whole lot of information in our current resolution about protecting our wellfields. Um, if you are not familiar with this, it starts in the northwestern part of our township and trickles all the way through the city. It goes into Carlisle, and it just keeps going south in that fashion. Um, so we are really the start of it, and us preserving it will help millions of people. So, do you have any questions about any of the resolution language?
No, I don't think so, it's pretty clear.
Okay, and then also exhibit D and E are the zoning commission recommendation and the Montgomery County Planning Commission recommendation, and exhibit F is the public hearing notices. And those are notices for both the zoning commission and you all. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Um, with that, I'm gonna ask if there's any testimony or any, uh, anybody who wants to speak, uh, related to this proposed change or amendment. If so, I'll swear you in.
I'll go ahead and say a few words, Tyler, so.
Sure.
You want to swear me in first?
You want to say your name and address.
Mark Frost, 7444 South Cyrus Road, German Township, Ohio.
Thank you. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that any testimony you shall give before the Board of Trustees during the hearing shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? If so, answer I do.
I do. So basically, a lot of these definitions, uh, we just kinda went over them, they kinda needed to be updated. Unfortunately, uh, we're also looking at some changes to the text of the zoning commission. I wanted to, was kinda pushing to get that done this year. Unfortunately, our last meeting last Wednesday, we had three city members not there, so that made it almost impossible. So, 'cause we only have meetings quarterly, so unfortunately, those, those changes that include some of these definitions won't be in place probably until 2022, so, so about that's what you can do. So, that's all, thank you.
Anyone else? I know, uh, I'll, I guess we can speak about it at the, when we wanna deliberate on this. Is there anyone else who wants to speak before we close this section? Okay, I'm gonna make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The public hearing is closed.
Okay, just in the deliberation, I guess I just wanna make the comment that, I know you guys, and, and the zoning commission's been working on some other things, like maintenance codes and stuff. This doesn't refer to any of those changes, that, that will be at a later date if we...
Correct.
...with the maintenance code.
Correct.
I wanna make sure that's clear to everyone. Um, I, at this point, I, I would introduce a resolution, uh, what would be more 2021...
Will be 2021-26, and I've given you some sample language that we will use.
Okay. Okay, I'm gonna introduce 2021-26, a resolution to amend German Township zoning resolution as, uh, proposed by the, uh, German Township Rural Zoning Commission and, uh, and accepted by the, uh, Montgomery County Planning Commission.
Second.
Any discussion of resolution 2021-26? Hearing done, I will call the roll. Mr. Raymer?
Yes.
And Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
Resolution 21, 2021-26 is adopted.
Thank you. At this point, move over to, uh, the normal trustee meeting, monthly meeting. Um, I'm gonna open it up for visitor comments. Anybody that might have a, a visitor comment, please, uh, retain the five minutes. Uh, state your name and address before you start any speaking, please.
We can close the other meeting.
We've made a motion to close the other meeting before we voted.
Yeah, we closed the public hearing.
Mr. Mersch, do you have something tonight?
Come on up, yes, sir. Please state your name and address, please. Steve Mersch, 7347 Weaver Road. Um, I'm back again this year, uh, for an annual event, although we didn't have it last year with the COVID. Uh, we did not hold the Twisted Pretzel Tour last year, but we're back to hold it again this year. Um, I wanted to talk a little bit about the routes and the roads and, uh, just to get the support again of the township for this event. Um, the routes are very similar to what we had two years ago. Some minor changes, primarily just in downtown Germantown and a little bit, uh, out, um, to the north for the, the 47-mile loop. Uh, little improvements that we, we try to make every year, you know, as we get experience. So we've got four routes, uh, the Loop, which is 47 miles, the Giant, 34 miles, the Rod, which is 21 miles, and the Ring, which is eight miles. So it's payers, from your experienced rider, 47 miles is a good ride for them to older people, kids. They love the, the Ring, which is just eight miles out to the dam and back. Um, it's an association with the Twisted Pretz, with the Pretzel Festival, which is being held again this year, so it's on the 25th of, uh, of September. We'll start at, uh, 8:00 A.M. out of Germantown. Um, the locations that you have helped us with in the past that, that are, we, we feel are critical are 725, uh, where you cross over to Twin Creek. One side of that is the city, but the other side of that is the township. So where, um, Creek Road, it turns right off of 725 when you're heading out to the dam, they'll be coming back that way also, in which case they'll have to turn left on the 725. And since that's part of the, of the eight-mile route, there will be youngsters, there will be older people there, so it's critical that we have that safe. Uh, that, uh, if, if you can help us with somebody on that side, on the west side of the bridge, to make sure people leaving Creek Road safely turn left onto, uh, 725, go across the bridge, and then back onto the bike path. That's probably, of all the things that I lay awake at night afraid of, is that intersection, you know, that's, people can come down that hill.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, um, I'm hoping that you can help us out again this year with, uh, with somebody there. Um, Jeff Dondero is a part of a GARS group, you know the GARS group, I think?
Yep.
Um, their group, their members are gonna be monitoring a number of the other intersections. Uh, they'll be in radio communication with everybody, so that's works out really well with those guys. Um, we're using the city, um, police, and I'll be meeting with them later, uh, this week, to, to cover the intersections in town. But when you get outside of town, primarily, uh, the GARS and anything you guys can do to help or suggestions, if you say, "Look, we think you really should have an officer at this intersection," or, or not, we'd, we would appreciate that input if you've got someone available.
Absolutely.
So the timeframe, uh, like I said, we start at 8:00, but you're not gonna get people coming back, so 8:30, 9:00 o'clock, something like that, uh, till maybe noon, 1:30, you know, somewhere in there. That'd be a judgment call on their, on their end.
Okay.
You know, but four hours, something like that would be, would be really helpful. What do you think, Mark? Does that sound about right?
And you'll have, hey, hey, someone bringing up the rear?
Yes, to tell them that this, yeah.
The police are still there then.
Yeah, they will certainly know. Yeah, say, "Tell the police, we're done."
We're done.
And then you all start at the same time.
We all start same time, yep, yep. Um, let's see, what else do I wanna say? I think, oh, I know what it was, the two roads. Uh, I heard the comment about it, uh, Am Hill. Um, I know there's nothing you guys can do about it. You did some pressure on, uh, the group that can do something about it, and that they patched it, and, and that was nice. It was better than it was before. Now, again, it's kinda bad shape again. I don't know if there's any pressure you can exert on the county or whoever is responsible for that, if they could, you know, dress it up somehow, make it a little bit safer, because people are coming down that hill right now, and, and...
It's the worst lane.
Yeah, and Mark was at the top of the hill last few years, and he would tell them, "Slow down, slow down." And we were actually pretty good. I don't think we've had accidents on that hill, although it scares me every year, you know? And then the only other road that's in the township that seems to be ripe for, for resurfacing or whatever is Clayton. Clayton has, no, is that in your township?
No, that's Jackson.
That's Jackson Township, okay, so.
Your next meeting.
And that's, Clayton Road's in bad shape right there.
It is, it is.
Off of Manning.
I think that's about it.
I don't see a problem with getting your office, having somebody there at all.
That would be...
So that'll be taken care of for sure, and then we can work with you on whatever else you guys need or want, 'cause you guys have a huge turnout, or you...
Yeah, yeah, we had, yeah, it's been growing every year. Um, it's looking good for this year. I think a lot of the riders are itching to get back out again.
Yeah.
Uh, so, uh, we're hoping, it is a good fundraiser. I mean, we raised, what, $8,000, and we distributed them.
Last year was six, because it was virtual, but I think we did closer to 12, 10, 12, prior year.
When, when we had it live, yeah.
We've done over 60,000 since then, who were started, this will be what, our eighth?
Right, our, this is our eighth.
Yes, it is.
And every dime's given away. We don't keep anything for ourselves. Uh, we're, it's a Lions, basically a Lions, Germantown Lions activity, and so it all goes to churches and...
And then you guys working with the GARS, the radio...
Yes, that works. They, you did that last...
We've done that the last few years.
Last few, okay.
Yeah, they're great, I don't know if you wanna say anything, contribute anything?
Yep. You know, we, we usually have about 30 people out, of course.
Okay.
And, uh, some of us are Lions.
Okay.
Uh, so we just work well together, and it's, it's a community effort, if you will, to save, save safety for that many people moving around. And we've run into, you know, few people getting lost, or kids getting lost, and they're out in the back where they need to go. Uh, I think the only thing we ever see is somebody even went over to the bars and got hurt.
Yeah, that turned out, you know, once it was all said and done, she had had a condition. Um, the, her son said it was, it was actually fortunate, uh, that there were people there to help her when, when it did happen. It wasn't related to the ride, it was related to her medical condition.
That was one of those, right.
And GARS will be wearing, uh, reflective vests, uh, right?
With the same emergency radio app.
Right.
Okay.
They'll be highly visible.
All right. Do you, do you need any speaks, contact, or anything, or you guys?
I, we got it.
Yeah, okay, and Jeff, I'm sorry, can you state your name and address for...
Jeff, Dondero, S.T.O.N.E.D.R.O., 6793 South, 3rd Mill Road.
Thank you.
I can email you guys the routes, so you can see the full routes, or I've got them printed out here, but I think email would be better.
Email's fine.
Got them electronic, you can blow them up and things like that, so, do you have an email address I can send it to?
Yes, do you have his?
Perfect, I'll send it to you.
I'm gonna write the new one on.
Okay.
Then he can distribute it to us.
Perfect.
Steve, all that money goes to food banks, is it?
Uh, different charity, it goes to some, well, church, they have food bank, like Nited, uh, has a food bank, St. Augustine has a food bank, um...
This is true.
First, yeah.
Clerk at Germantown Township, only stopover.
Very good. And I'll send it right off to you. Now, you can click on, uh, on the route, it's a link, and that way you can blow it up, and...
Yeah, you did that years ago.
Yeah.
And if somebody was gonna contribute, but not ride, would you check B made out to Twisted Pretzel?
Uh, or Lions Club, prayer of Twisted Pretzel Tour, either one has.
The Lions Club, C3, right?
Yes.
Are the maps available on the web?
Yes, if you go to our website, twistedpretzeltour.com, uh, you can take a look at the, just click onto the routes, and then, again, you'll get a map, My Ride, and you can blow it up and print it, or whatever you wanna do there.
Twisted Pretzel Tour?
Twisted Pretzel Tour, altogether, thespaces.com. Big fly!
Thank you.
Thank you for coming, Steve.
Mr. Keener, do you mind?
W865, McRoe.
Thank you. Okay, uh, is there any other public comments?
You might wanna ask about online comments.
Yeah, Haley, can you unmute the line? If there's anyone on the, the line, uh, they're also able to contribute at this time?
On the coming tour?
We have, we have, um...
I have six guests.
I sent them all this...
Sorry.
I sent them the request, so, if they wanted to unmute.
Okay, I assume they'll get there, they haven't already. Um, Mr. Ethan, would you like to go with the fiscal officers' report?
Absolutely, thank you. Good evening again, everyone. Um, I have some good news I'm gonna share with you in a minute, but let's start at the very beginning, and that is, you have two sets of minutes. Uh, the June 14th regular meeting and the June 17th special meeting, which dealt with the JED. Are there any corrections to the minutes?
No.
Could I have a motion to approve them?
I'll give you a motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, sir.
In favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. All right, moving on. I also have given you the financial reports for the month of June. You have the fund status report at the end of June. You have the year-to-date cash summary by fund. You have the June receipts, and you have the June payments. There's nothing unusual that I need to point out to you, but if you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them. And if not, if there's no questions or comments on the financials, I'd like to have a motion to approve the financial reports, authorize the payment of the June bills, which were warrant 50489 through 50503, and vouchers 387 through 502.
So moved.
Second.
Do you, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. Uh, last month's meeting, Mr. Raymer, you asked each of the department heads to review their budgets year-to-date. Uh, I know that, uh, at least, Mr. Holberg sent you some information, but I also included the, uh, status of all of our appropriations as of the end of June, um, compared to, uh, what was originally appropriated. And this is split out by fund, so if you have any questions about any of the funds, we can go through that. Just a reminder, the third column, uh, sorry, the fifth column from the left, the one titled Final Appropriation, is what you, essentially what you approved in January. The year-to-date expenditures, which is the third column from the right, is everything spent through the end of June. And the two columns, one named Current Reserve for Encumberance, the other one, Unencumbered Balance, is what is remaining in those appropriations.
Say, thank you for doing that, and Mr. Holberg, thank you for sending over the information at the last meeting. Um, I, I've reviewed this, I don't know, Mr. Stubbs, you had a chance, or have any questions or comments? I, I feel like it was pretty straightforward, there was a few things I noted, but none of them were on large balances. Uh, I guess what I would say is I appreciate Mr. Ethan putting this together the way that you did it, because it makes it very simple to see how much of year-to-date expenditure we have, so, um, keep in mind, like, if, if you haven't had a chance, if you look at this report, make sure everything looks consistent with what you expect, but, um, I appreciate it, and that's, that's really all I was looking to do.
Okay, very good. It was an easy report to print out. We can do that at any point in time.
Yeah.
So, when we get close to the end of the year, we'll look at it again.
I'm a citizen, not buying for this question.
Moving forward, I finally have some good news to report concerning the potential inclusion of Ohio's townships in the distribution of funds from the $1.9 trillion American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. If any of you are not aware, late in June, the Ohio Legislature passed, and the governor then signed House Bill 168, which included language designated townships as units of local government eligible to receive the ARP funds. German Township will be receiving $303,149.57. Half will come this year, and the other half will come in 2022. Uh, these funds can be used, or appropriated, for the next three years until 12/31/2024, and I believe we have actually, until sometime in 2026, actually intended. And we'll be attending a webinar on 6/28, I'm sorry, 7/28, discussing the use of the ARP funds, and also I will be applying for those online sometime very soon. We have to apply before September, early September, I will do that, probably before the end of this month. Now, let me tell you, there are five general categories that are eligible uses, and they're, and they are somewhat restrictive. The first one is to support public health expenditures by, for example, funding COVID-19 mitigation efforts, medical expenses, behavioral healthcare, and certain public health and safety staff. The second one is to address negative economic impacts caused by the public health emergency. These include economic harms to workers, households, small businesses, impacted industries, and the public sector. The third category is to replace lost public sector revenue and using this funding to provide government services to the extent of the reduction in revenue experienced due to the pandemic. Fourth will be to provide premium pay for essential workers, including additional support to those who have and will bear the greatest health risk because of their service in critical infrastructure sectors. And lastly, invest in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure, which makes necessary investments to improve access to clean drinking water, support vital wastewater and stormwater infrastructure, and to expand access to the broadband internet. Those are the five major categories. I'm sure I'm gonna learn a lot more about that as the weeks go forward, including at the seminar on July 28th. But at some point, between now and the end of 2024, you will have to decide how we will use that $303,000.
Uh, just based on one of the things you said, I've, I've talked to people in the township, actually recently, um, the broadband's an issue. I think this person lived on Probable County Line Road and worked from home, um, and have connectivity issues all the time. So, uh, if there's something we can do to get broadband, some more widespread in the township, that would be, uh, better internet, get better internet out here would be great. So, we'll see where that goes, but that's definitely, if that's something we can do, that would be, at least have an option. Now, there's, there is no option.
It's something that I thought of too, when I read through those five categories. Maybe it's the most obvious one that we can do, I don't know.
Haley, I, I think we're gonna have to brainstorm what we can, 'cause I think, based on what you had mentioned, we could potentially have, like, some, some lost revenue from taxes, but it's gonna be very small, so there's nothing else that pops to the mind that we definitely can get reversed or correct?
I think the revenue loss, and Mr. Holberg and I have talked about that in the past, it was a little bit of gas tax money, that, for the months that people just weren't going out, but beyond that, the collections of our, uh, property tax revenue have been very good. In fact, last year was higher than most years, so I don't think there'll be much that we can use for lost revenue, there might be a small amount.
Yeah, and, and it can be, if the lost revenue wouldn't have to necessarily just be 2020, right? I guess if, if we could justify over a, a two- or three-year period that it went down in some, or does it have to be a specific time for your lost revenue?
No, I don't think there's any particular time for it. I mean, the pandemic asset, it now stands as beginning to wind down. Now, whether it picks up again with variants, who knows?
I read an article, uh, this afternoon, basically, talking about the lost gas tax, and how Ohio seemed to fare better than other states due to the fact that the governor increased the gas tax, so it, it didn't seem as hard of a hit. But if you go to, like, Pennsylvania, and run their numbers as far as their gas tax, it was pretty significant, you know, the, the state's having to deal with billion-dollar projects because of the, the money, the lack of gas tax that's coming in. So, I guess my only thought was, if there was some state agency that was tracking the actual loss of gas tax, you know, it's not, not compared to what we had in, like, 2018 or 2017, before the governor increased the gas tax amount, um, you know, that would be helpful to kind of maybe try to calculate the true loss.
Back into the, what the gas tax would have been, based on, say, the 2018 cents per gallon, what we got every month, say, okay, that's...
That's kinda where I was, I was wondering if, is... That's kind of where I was, I was wondering if you could extrapolate that out.
Right.
Wait, you forgot how many gallons we used.
Yeah, that would be, that would
If you forgot gallons, then you could figure out how much the loss was.
I would hope the webinar, this would be one of the key things that they would cover, to how to calculate that.
I'm sure that some state agency would be doing that.
Right.
I would have
There were 1,300 townships, as well as I don't know how many municipalities, that are going to all be dealing with the same thing that we're dealing with.
They're going to be asking the same questions, because that would, you know,
Absolutely. So I don't, unlike last year with the CARES money, where the timing was pretty tight and we had to move quickly, we don't have that requirement now, since we can decide what we want to do anytime between now and the end of 2024.
Yeah.
So I don't recommend that you rush into anything.
Right. I agree, what I would ask is after the July 28 discussion in our next meeting, we just kind of have a chat about that again. Just keep it on top of mind and find out what more to qualify or what more you can learn, because I don't want anything to just continually delay that we haven't started discussions or anything we can brainstorm that we can start to use. Because if you did a project like what you're talking about, that's something to take a significant amount of lead time, so.
I recommend if you have the opportunity to listen to the webinar. But even if you can't watch it live, you can always go back and pick it up on the OTA website.
Okay.
So, I mean, I'm happy to kind of summarize what happens in that webinar. But this is a big enough issue that it might behoove you to spend the time to actually listen to it.
Do you know the time on that? It seems to be later than that.
Give me a sec.
I think it's at 10 o'clock.
Ohio Trustee Association.
Oh, yes, OTA, and Ohio Trustee. 10:00 AM, 10 to noon, two hours. But again, if that's not convenient, just go to the OTA website. As a member, you can get access to all that.
Okay.
Perfect.
July 28. I'm not sure that the webinar is open to the general public. I think it's only to OTA members. Because you have to register in advance. In fact, you both should go ahead and register as if you're going to attend.
Okay.
And then you can easily go back and watch the recording later. I think there will be many, many more webinars, both by the OTA and by the Ohio Office of Management and Budget. There were numerous of them last year with the CARES Act money. And this money is so much larger than what CARES money was.
Right.
I just read an article today. Do states even need this much money? But it's there, and if we don't use it, someone else I assume will. So hopefully, we'll find a way.
To use it.
Okay, any more, any more comments on that issue? I'll move on. I wanted to let you know that the County Board of Elections website now reflects that our half mill parks levy has been approved for the November 2 ballot. So I do not have an issue number yet. I don't believe those are assigned until after. Everything has to be in by August 4. So that should be coming by next month's meeting. Also, following last month's meeting, I forwarded the paperwork to the Ohio Department of Public Safety to add the additional $5 motor vehicle permissive tax that you approved last month. We've received confirmation from the state that the additional tax will be collected on all vehicle registrations in the unincorporated area of the township, starting on January 1. The next issue is something that just came up at the very last minute. And that is, back on June 17, President Biden and Governor Dewine both declared June 19, otherwise known as Juneteenth, both a federal and a state holiday. The Juneteenth holiday officially enshrines June 19 as the national day to acknowledge the freedom, history, and culture that June 19, 1865, the day on which the last slaves in the United States were set free in Texas, what that day has come to symbolize. The Ohio Revised Code specifies paid holidays for full-time township employees, and those holidays now include the Juneteenth holiday. However, German Township did not provide a day off for this year's holiday, nor did we pay holiday wages. So I reached out to the prosecutor's office, to APA Anu Sharma, to discuss this issue. She recommends that the township either pay employees for the 2021 Juneteenth holiday or provide a floating holiday which can be used before the end of the year. So I think you two need to discuss this. And if you, whatever decision you make about the 2021 holiday, I would like you to do that by a resolution.
Well, first of all, do you guys know the employee's opinion, if they'd rather have?
I can tell you my opinion.
Okay.
That works.
My opinion is that it would be much easier to just pay it out than to have somebody have one more day they can just take off, which then we have to plan to give them. The road department may be a little bit different, but that's just my thoughts. And nobody says no to money.
Right.
Right.
I don't have any opinion on it, it doesn't really matter to us either way.
Yeah. Keep in mind, when you guys are deciding for the road department, that you have one road department. The way that we'll get holiday wages and one, just one straight salary, doesn't take separately for the holiday. So if you decide to pay the holiday, he gets no additional compensation. Just trying to
So we get, well, he's not the only person. The chief is the same way, the sergeant's the same way. So Mr. Holberg, the chief and sergeant all are salaried. We can certainly put in eight hours of comp time that they can take at any point in time. Or, again, they can take a day off. But with the company, if I put it in the comp time, they will still get that time to take off if they want, and whenever.
That would be the easiest way to do it for salaries, boys. And just pay the hourly and comp those salaries.
Just make sure I'm fully clear on this. This was a new issue this year, that our holidays here at the township have not changed. That now this is a new recognized holiday that we won't be observing in addition to the holidays that we generally observe, correct?
We currently have 10 paid holidays, this will make 11 paid holidays, and we'll do that by a second resolution.
Yeah.
If I need to change the personnel manual.
Okay.
But the first thing we have to decide is what are we going to do about this this year?
And so I think what we're saying is introduce a resolution, 2021-27, does that sound correct?
Yes, 2021-27.
To pay out the hourly for the Juneteenth holiday this year, and then do comp time for our salary employees?
That will work, I'll second.
Now, I will point out, this is only for full-time employees. So unfortunately, this is stool. This is closed, as well as Mr. Nichols. Will not get this benefit. Any discussion of Resolution 2021-27? During that, I will call the roll, Mr. Raymer?
Yes.
And Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
2021-27 is adopted. Now, we have in Personnel Manual Section 4.2-3, subsection A, has a list of our 10 current holidays. And we need to update that section to include June 10, Juneteenth as our 11th township holiday. So that would be Resolution 2021-28.
Let me back up a step here, should I, as before we introduce that resolution? But how are we managing part of, I guess this was just for this year, so going forward, we'll manage this one same as the rest of them? So that's just for this year, working with the comp time?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because on all other holidays, the chief, sergeant, Mr. Holberg takes the day off, and if they don't, and I'm sure they report to me comp time already.
And then they created this, the holiday was made, what, two days before the day of it? So we haven't even had a meeting since.
I think it was recognized either Thursday or Friday that week, and then it was the following Monday, that was absurd.
Correct.
Okay.
And, you know, many of the government agencies stayed open. I think the post office didn't close.
Yeah.
Because it was just such short notice. But going forward, they will.
I'll introduce Resolution 2021-28 to add to Section 4.2-3A on our Personnel Manual for the 11th holiday for Juneteenth. I'll second.
Any discussion? During that, I will call the roll, Mr. Raymer?
Yes.
And Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Resolution 2021-28 is adopted. Okay. I will also point out that I've done two public records requests since last month's meeting. Both requests were for the most current draft of the JED agreement. And my final item is a reminder that we do have a special meeting concerning the JED on July 29, here in the Township Hall at 6:00 PM. With that, I am done.
Thank you. Chief?
One of the two cruisers that we ordered this year is currently being outfitted at Katy Rose. I'll remind you, the board, that sometime between March, the March meeting and the April meeting, we had two cruisers that came in. One had some electrical issues, so we refused it, and they were supposed to reorder it for us. They've not received any word that it's being produced yet. And the phones were down, but as of Friday, July 9, they're back up and running, except for I think the road department still has a problem. And that concludes my report. Time Warner will be here tomorrow between 11 and 12 to take a look at the road department's issues. I only have a couple of things on my agenda tonight. One is, as you're aware, the old John Deere clearbackhoe was sold on GovDeals. It was picked up one day before the new one arrived, so perfect timing. Murphy Tractor delivered the new one last week, and we took delivery of that, got it lettered, and it's now in service. I just got the invoice for the new one, and Mr. Ethan and I put together the money that was received from GovDeals, which now that we're doing direct deposit, was a lot quicker than they sent us a paper check, which we cannot agree. For GovDeals.
We have it. We have the money. It's in the bank.
So yes, that helped offset the cost of the new one significantly. The only other couple of things is we continue to mow and trim the cemeteries, which has been quite a bit since it's rained every fourth day, or seems like it anyways, which has also made our pre-chip seal patching kind of interesting, so we can kind of skip around. But other than that, that's all I have.
Mr. Holberg?
Mr. Sewell? Hello. So my report's pretty short tonight. I've done a few permits, a new house on Preble County Line, and one on Friend, a shed on Sugar Street, and an accessory structure on Germantown, Middletown Pike. I did Tyler look into the budget as you asked, and I am at 46% of my budget as of Mr. Ethan's report.
Thank you.
Then, this has come up a couple of times. I know last year Lori had actually said that the system that I use for zoning and Shawna closes for trash potentially was coming with some online bill pay. I have looked into that a little bit. I have had several people in the last month ask me, when are you guys going to get online bill pay? I don't know. So it would be very helpful for Shawna and myself, I believe. Just because instead of somebody mailing or bringing a check to her or cash, they could just get online and pay it, have it automatically dropped out of their account, et cetera, et cetera. I have people ask to pay to me with a credit card, because some permits are higher in cost. So that could be helpful in that aspect. I do have two sets of numbers at our GoDaddy account. We can do bill pay through them. It would be $17.49 or more a month, depends on which plan we would go with. And there is a 2.9% plus $0.30 fee per transaction. Iwork, the program that Shawna and I use, is $650 per year. That is for their integrated services. Then there would be additional fees with the company that would actually process it. And they prefer to use PAYROC, that's P-A-Y-R-O-C, or XPRESS, spelled X-P-R-E-S-S. I do not have their fees yet. I have reached out to both of those companies. So the difference between the GoDaddy and the Iwork, obviously, the GoDaddy's cheaper. But there would potentially, I'm not sure on how it would work. There would be more paperwork. I don't say more paperwork, but there would be to get the transactions from when they clear our bank, to post it on the account. That would be an additional step, I believe, versus if we went through Iwork, which is already integrated in the system, so the system would see the payment and apply it as it should. That is all that I have of that. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Just make sure I understand, so Iwork would be a little bit more seamless, because it could actually apply to the payments on the accounts? You guys would have less to reconcile here, is that
Correct.
Whereas the GoDaddy, you'd still have the additional work, it just processed the payment only?
Now, it might integrate. As far as it going on to our website, I feel that if we went through GoDaddy, it would be more simple, because that to host our website. So in that aspect, it would be more simple. Now to get it from our bank account and the Iwork seeing each other for the payment posting, I'm not sure how that works. I haven't dug that deep. But however, Iwork would be able to be on our GoDaddy site, I'm not sure how that works. Looks like the opposite size on each issue.
With GoDaddy, is there a way that that 2.9% can be passed on to the resident who's using the credit card?
So yes, there are several different ways that we can do it, and I'm sure you guys have seen you pay anything online, you see it all the time. There's like an additional, some, most places now, they either build it into the fee or they charge a flat rate. So a lot of times you'll see, like especially at food trucks, they have a $X amount minimum. That's because they're going to be charged potentially an actual amount and a percentage, like a set and a percentage. Some places charge like, I think the B&amp;B charges a $2.50 or $3.0 service fee, they call it, which is to cover their credit card costs. So that would be a way. I know I do pay something online every month. That's auto drafted out of my account, and it's, there's like a $2 fee. But it makes it so much more simple for me, that I don't have to tackle with it that
I'm just looking at the GoDaddy, I mean, it's $2.50 a year. The other one, Iwork, $6.50, and the fees for both of them on top of it. I guess I would be interested to know, and Mr. Stubbs, you might have more experience with it, what other townships are we doing for trash billing and those type of collections? Or for, you know, in the minority at this point where you don't have a credit card option? Or that's relatively similar to like a Perry Township or some of the Jackson Townships?
I don't think they have online, Perry and Jackson, I don't think do. The one that, so the starting out cost, so we're not sure which bracket we're going to be in, or which
Correct.
I'm assuming we're going to move up a tier just based on numbers, at least one tier, if not two. And then charge the percentage. So it'd have to be, if we do this, if you pay online, there's going to have to be a built-in additional fee, so we don't take a loss at the trash billing parts, for sure. So I guess if you don't So I guess if you don't mind looking into it a little further.
Absolutely.
And come back next month and see what we have.
Absolutely.
Definitely don't want to make more work for you and Shauna if it's going to take extra paperwork, but you know, we'll see, we'll see what it is.
Both of them are secure.
Right.
Obviously, so we don't have to worry about that aspect at all.
I guess it's probably best if we, Mrs. Reed, that have full discussion, but I guess is there anything we want to stipulate, like if they can't do X, Y, or Z over this amount, just so we don't continue pushing them around the whole, we don't feel like that's something we're good with?
I was just thinking basic information, because just, I mean, to get a general idea on cost, you got the $6.50 for Iworks, but if we could find out what tier we're in and what our cost for GoDaddy would be, and then how it's going to go on our website.
Right.
Too, so I mean.
Right.
That's a big portion. If it's not going to work properly, then we can't have it, so. Just looking, I'd just say look into the basics right now, if that's okay, if that's okay with you.
Yeah, that's fine. I think.
I don't want to commit to anything today, obviously.
Right. The estimated cost fee, I mean, might be difficult because we probably don't know how many bills we stopped with credit card, even since, I mean, it's not like everybody will necessarily have to do that. So I guess if you can't come back with some tiering information on how much it might change, and then, yeah, as Mr. Stubbs pointed out, like what's, how would you view this to put a bolt on one to our new website, which you're obviously the right person to help us out with that.
So that's just, does the tier system depend on how many people use it?
Well, that's what.
We don't know.
She had mentioned that the first tier was what, 17?
1749 a month.
A month. So we don't know where we're going to be on that.
And with the GoDaddy, it seemed like it was based off of what type of business you were. Because they had a couple of different, like one provided food, one was a shipping company, you know, so it's a little bit different.
Actually, something, you know, I've been doing system implementation for 30 some years, so I've got a little bit of background in this. The chances are the way you want to go is with the Iworks because that's going to be completely integrated. You'll log on, you've got an account number that says you owe $52.39 for your quarterly bill. If you want to pay it by credit card, okay, we're going to add the $3.50 service charge. It hits the credit card, it goes to the bank, and it automatically then updates the account. With going through GoDaddy, that's going to be more shopping cart oriented, and so that's really designed if you're selling widgets or whatever, and so you're typically going to have to set up your own shopping cart, and chances are trying to get the integration with Iworks is going to be probably better.
That's what I felt. I felt the same way. Yeah, I'll get that information and bring it to you next month.
One thing you might want to ask the Iworks people heavily is how the web interface is going to look, because a lot of times with these third-party packages, what they'll do is our residents will log on to Germantown Township Trash or GT Trash or something dot Iworks dot com. It's not necessarily going to be through the Germantown Township dot org website, so we could put a link on there, you know, on our trash to go to that paid site. If you mind if I find out how the interface, you know, the URL.
Definitely, definitely.
I mean. I feel like we. Yeah. I definitely agree on the processing fee, the $6.50 is not exorbitant compared to what we collect in trash revenue, but it's, we've already taken on, you know, the email this year and some other things, so I think we need to, you know, consider that. So if you can look into both of them, find out a little bit more, but I tend to agree with Mr. Keener, the other one, it's more integrated, would help you guys, and it could at least help justify some of that email fee, so. And just let us know, and then Mrs. Reed can hear more about it as well next time.
Absolutely. And that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. As far as trustee reports, Mr. Heeston mentioned that we have the JED meeting coming up later this month. Right now, the prosecutors are reviewing the contract draft that we have, and it will be returned back to the lawyer that we are working with, the counselor, is Weemer, and she will then bring that back to us on that meeting later this month to let us know where we stand with the JED. After that, I believe the next step will be sending the petitions over to the school board, as many of you know, and seeing if they want to opt into that JED. So that's where we stand with the JED. As far as the Parks Board, Mr. Heeston also stole the thunder there. We have gotten the ballot.
I hit the go first, I have that much.
For November, and so we're still working towards, you know, making communication plans there. We did have the July 4 slash July 5 parade. I was actually on vacation, so I didn't get to attend, but I know the community really wanted to do that this year, so hopefully people got to attend that parade. But that's all I have on my agenda. Mr. Stubbs?
All right, just a couple things. Cemetery, Jeremy talked about it too at the rain, they're a little behind on the mowing, so just be kind if you drive through there, because some people aren't. But they're doing the best they can, especially on the hills, it's nearly impossible. They have to wait, he's got, Mark knows down there, Mark Steiner, he's got the data down, how many days it has to be dry before you can get back up and be safe on those hills towards the back. Pool, so far, where our attendance is pretty, pretty good, so I think we're shooting for our $100,000 in revenue goal again this year, so we're on track as of now, and which is great. I'd just like to say that Devon Stambro is doing a fantastic job as the manager of the Germantown Pool, and without him and his forward-looking vision, we would be in a little bit of trouble, but he does a great job, and I just wanted to make sure to get a shout out to him. The JED meeting on July 29th, I just found out today, I have a mandatory meeting at the school. I have to attend that evening, so I will not be in attendance. I do not have a problem with that as long as you do not, and I don't foresee any changes or anything, so I do not have a problem missing that meeting. I just wanted to let you know in advance that that is, is not, I'm not going to be able to make it. Chief Anzig and the police department, I always like to end my report with that, do a fantastic job. I've had the opportunity to ride along with a couple more officers in the last month, which if you, you need to do that while you're here. It's a fun time. I rode along with Adam and Dylan and what else? Three, right? I'm drawing a blank. Right. I'm working my, well, I admit that I've rode along.
Oh, you rode along, okay.
But I'm working my way through them. It's a fun time.
Did you go with Josh?
I did not. Oh, I was supposed to go with Andy, and then I. Do we know what hit us or what got hit with lightning?
No.
That messed everything up?
But it did mess everything up.
The one person that was, that I have to give credit in my department was Shauna because we switched the phone over to her cell phone. So literally her phone rang.
For two weeks.
For two weeks. For Shauna, so.
Middle of the night, he got called.
Yes, the Kahu lines, they still work, the, I'm always supposed to say Frontier, whoever.
Oh, the old spectrum lines, they stay up. Well, yeah, but the only thing we have on there currently is the corner fence, so it only goes to dispatch, nobody wants to talk about it.
But just so your board knows, we did open an insurance claim, so there was quite a bit of damage.
Yes. So just to conclude, and I was, I've been in here several times in the last week and had the opportunity to talk to Chief and Shauna. Shauna is new, but she is doing a absolutely fantastic job.
I agree.
Learning, she's personable, she does a great job answering her cell phone, because our other phones doesn't, don't work, so she's going above and beyond, and just like to recognize her effort here at the township. So with that, that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. And I don't think we have any other business tonight, so with that, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I will second.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned at 8 o'clock.